This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our community forum. It's a little bit of a different format this year. We're trying to think about not just improving, but innovating and looking to bring more people into the conversation in every way that we possibly can. So we're joined here in the room by several community members. Also, this is a Facebook Live event, so hopefully there's a lot of people tuning in by video. I can say just from the 90-some people that have already participated in the exchange, that's far more than the three, four, five, sometimes seven or eight people who've been able to come to forums in the past. So we have a lot of really good feedback for the board to consider as they're always considering and thinking about how to continue to innovate and move forward. So the rundown for tonight is a little bit different. Let me walk through the schedule with you briefly. We'll talk a little bit now again about format. I'll walk you through this and then we'll get into the exchange information that people did share prior to meeting here tonight. We'll then ask Debbie and Lou to walk through five minutes of fame each, which is just a quick five-minute presentation on a particular area, a couple of particular areas that rose to the top in the exchange. And then we're going to walk through, and I'll talk about advocacy and timeline around the budget as well, which was something people were really interested in learning more about. And then at 7:25 or so ballpark, we're probably up to, it's now about 7:30 when we'll do it, we'll have a hot stove discussion on the exchange feedback. So other questions that came up that weren't part of some of the broader topics, but they were smaller, quicker items that we can give real fast answers to. We've got a lot of administrators and board members here too, so where it's applicable or appropriate, we may jump in and ask them to perhaps answer a question for people. Meanwhile, you'll see a QR code on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen for the people who are here tonight. There's also a link on several slides that will come up, and that link went out this afternoon as well and is posted on the Facebook page. And that link is to a live exchange for tonight. So that's different than the information I'm about to share with you. If you just hold your phone up and point it at the QR code in the camera function, it'll take you directly to that exchange. And the idea is for you to be able to ask questions, make comments, provide suggestions based on the information presented tonight, or anything else is on your mind that didn't come up in the previous exchange, or if we didn't answer a question that you had in the previous exchange and you'd really like it answered tonight. And we'll pull those questions and comments up on the screen as well after we walk through this information and have for about the last half, a little bit of a facilitated discussion regarding those additional items that people like to provide input on. And this is all, all the information is memorialized for the board to be able to look through later, for community members to have access to, and certainly for the exchange that we launched tonight to continue to weigh in on and start really to engage in other people's thinking as well in trying to really broaden our horizon and be as inclusive as we possibly can. So that's a, oh, we're gonna wait an hour, not restart now. I want to walk through for people real quickly, the information that has been exchanged already and the way people engaged in this initial exchange. A real quick discussion of what this meant and who participated, kind of how the exchange went. The demographics are that 93 people participated, like I said, far more than the first, the initial forums that we've always had, which were three, four, or five people would come and talk to us. There's a lot more people providing a lot more feedback, which is great. Seventy thoughts were shared and a total of over 2,000 star ratings were assigned to those thoughts. The thoughts, well, let's just talk about the first 10 and you'll see how we landed at the topics for tonight. Really revolved around funding, around advocacy, and then several other comments in the exchange about technology initiatives, the one-to-one initiative, et cetera, which is why we wanted Debbie to speak on that tonight. So the top thoughts, what is the district administration team doing to increase New York State funding? If this advocacy is left to residents, can you share why? Our district will continue to have budget issues if we continue to have New York State funding issues, no question. Brighton should continue to pressure Albany for appropriate funding relative to our neighboring communities. It is a crime what Albany is doing. What is the BOE doing to help secure more funding, more of our foundation aid? We are being shortened, shorted by New York State. The lack of a full foundation aid payment has impacted our programming. Couldn't agree more. I'm glad that one African-American teacher was hired at Fraz. We need more. Studies show that kids learn better when there's a diverse teaching staff. And that's an item I know Lou will be asked about in the hot stove portion. Would love a change of mascot. The Baron is problematic and inaccessible. Are we still expecting to have, to have major cuts, make major cuts in the next school budget? What impact will that have for programming and teacher positions? What can every community member do to advocate to New York State and additional aid to Brighton? What is the fiscal picture of the district going forward into the next school year 2020, 2021? There has been talk about cutting more programs and maximizing class size. What are the BOE's priorities? And then again, several more of the funding questions certainly came up quite a bit as did technology items, many comments about start times, et cetera, also came up. And so we'll go through a lot of those and cover them in these five minutes of fame and then the hot stove portion as well. I want to show you a couple of other areas that we take a look at when we analyze this information and the way it's available to us. We look at this particular tab in this dashboard, which is really interesting, and it shows differences in groups. It takes people with similar ways of rating or ranking starring questions or comments or suggestions and shows us where their differences are, where they have comment ratings high or comment ratings low. And this was really interesting. These two groups of people, so Group A and Group B, which we, you know, again, they had similar starring patterns, which is how it breaks down. Lot of difference in the start time area, almost a 50-50 split, really interesting to us. And we've seen this as a common thread when we've looked at these comments before. So please move school start times to later for middle and high school. The evidence speaks for itself. So for example, Group A said, Side A, 22 people fell into this group. They ranked that 4.9. They absolutely agreed and agreed with that. Side B, the other side of the issue, 19 people gave that 1.3, so they see that very differently. And when you go down through each of these really similar split, high towards five, low towards one in terms of this issue. And then on the other side, where Side B rated certain things high, the same group of people, the same Side B group rated some of these comments high. There are much bigger issues to focus on than the start time for middle and high school students. Increased funding would take care of this issue. Side B rated that comment high. Side A rated that low. So the opposite perspective is the comments on the other side of the screen. And then one comment, I just read that extended studies should be out because it doesn't reach all students. ELL speech OTPT services do not reach all students. Shall we cut those? It is inequitable to say that advanced learners don't deserve services. Kudos to Brighton for addressing the needs of all. Side A didn't like that comment. Side B supportive of that comment essentially. The interesting way, some of this is how you read it too, right? Because the Side A people could also be saying that they don't agree or that they, it depends which half of the comment they might agree in, which is why we have conversations like this to figure out a little bit more about what people are thinking. And the comment ratings high, district administration team, what is the district team doing to increase funding? Brighton should continue to pressure Albany. Again, a lot of funding areas. This seems to be clearly an area where people all agree, which shouldn't be a big surprise to us that we ought to be doing more about funding. And our comment ratings low, I think we should hire a full-time assistant superintendent for equity and diversity. Both groups didn't see that as a high priority or as higher priority. I told them we're a comfortable one involved in restorative circles. They were unsure of the reason to. Connections cannot be forced was also a common rating low in terms of the comments. And what we sent out to the community are the reports that also include these themed areas, so they can break down if you wanted to take specifically a look at the comments that came up, the thoughts that came up around funding issues, is specific to New York State. Also themed or specific comments around budget, cuts to the budget or program. You can hover on those, you can click on them and see exactly what the comments were particular to that area. So that's for community members, again, all emailed out the link to that. People can take a look at those if they want to dig into it further. The beauty of it is the analysis is being done, being done by everybody. It's crowdsourced analysis, right? So you get to really dig into the data yourself and see what you believe that it's telling you. The bar function shows that the same way. So without going further into those, that's what helped drive the agenda tonight and for us to think about the things that we wanted to share with you and talk a little bit more about. And then you're gonna help drive the agenda in the second half of the night by entering more comments in the exchange that we've shared with you. So I'm going to ask now that we jump into these five minutes of fame, and Debbie's going to jump in to talk to us about technology.
Okay. So I believe that the focus of the questions and the statements were really, as Kevin, you mentioned a little bit earlier, around the one-to-one, the one-to-one initiative. We are in the fourth year of our one-to-one initiative.
It's on, yep. That's for the auto for the broadcast.
Anyway, so as those of you who have been around for the last four years know, we started with our eighth grade and then we have been building up and this year's juniors also have the tablet devices and then next year we will complete the build-out. Each year, I would say throughout this entire process, it's changed. It's changed as we're learning. It's changed as we're acquiring tools, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about those in just a second, as well as our teachers and our staff members and their abilities to kind of really estimate or judge when the appropriate use of technology versus when, you know, too much, when what we call the pencil and paper task is the task at hand. And so we've shifted and changed every year and I really anticipate that we will be doing the same over the course of the next few years. However, that being said, we have some observations that we have been making quite routinely, and I've tried to list them up here, both positives as well as things that we continue to look at. So if you take a look, we have noticed that, you know, by bringing on and providing our students with real-time access to devices, that they have just-in-time access to information and they're using that information. There's probably not a person in this room who doesn't rely on, you know, their smartphone or their computer on a daily basis to, you know, again, to access that information to not only answer questions, but to really make meaning of what you, you know, what you're thinking about and what you're learning. And we want our students to be able to access those tools as well in just the same sort of fashion. We've seen greater opportunities for alternative assessments. We've seen students creating videos. We've seen podcasts. We have seen multiple types of apps being used. Storyjumper comes to mind, where students are being afforded opportunities that they weren't before to really express themselves and really share with their teachers with, you know, what they're learning and how, you know, and how they're making meaning of that. Obviously, increased collaborative opportunities for students. Right now, again, if you're the parent of an eighth through eleventh grader, you probably are familiar with the term Schoology or OneNote. Both are tools that we use pretty extensively to not only provide students with content through the teacher, but also they provide forums for students to interact. And so, you know, previously where we would put students in groups and we'd say, you know, you need to, you need to collaborate on this one project, it relied very heavily on just, on real-time access or real-time face-to-face interactions. Real-time face-to-face interactions are very, very important and we give, we provide kids with that. But maybe you're the student who lives on the other side of town whose mom can't take you to Starbucks so that you can meet with your team on a Tuesday night to finish your project. Well, the tools that we've been using provide students with that opportunity to continue that collaboration outside of the school day. And then also increased organizational abilities. Again, I mentioned the tools, OneNote and Schoology primarily, but there's other tools that our teachers are helping our students learn how to use. And, you know, no more that the dog ate it or I forgot my homework because you're carrying it around with you all the time. And we have seen, especially for certain populations of students, this to be an incredible boon with regards to their abilities to complete that work. As far as ongoing focuses, we know that we still need to start thinking about or continuing to think about the balance between pencil and paper activities. You know, there's not a week that goes by that we don't say what the teachers, that we hear the teacher saying. If a pencil and paper is, it works, use it, right? If it's, you know, because there are certainly certain learning, certain learning activities that are afforded or take advantage of that and are necessitated by that. And then the impact of screen time. We heard that loud and clear last year from our parents as, we heard that loud and clear, I didn't realize that timekeeper, from our parents. So this year, the district's innovative teaching and learning team will be taking a look at screen time, not just about what types of screen time make up or constitute this kind of overarching umbrella, but also what does the amount? And are some screen times more desirable or less desirable than others? So you can probably look forward to the results of that particular study, like I said, a little bit later on.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Baker. Lou Lamo.
I'm really gonna challenge the camera crew on this. So I have the technical part of the presentation tonight. So one of the comments talked about revenue, revenue sources and what we're doing to fully fund our program. So I thought it would be important to set the foundation with looking at the revenues and putting it in context, our reliance on property taxes and our reliance on state aid. So the chart on the left-hand side is our, is our revenue chart. So we are 65% reliant on taxes, 21% state aid. We have fund balancing reserves, which is 4% of our total revenues. And that's a big part when we talk about year-end spending and margins and risk protections. That is, that's an important piece because if we reduce our reliance on that, then we have to reduce our reliance on the spending side too. So if someone says, well, you see, we have some money left over in year in a certain spending line item, we can try to tighten that up, but the first thing that has to come out is this, is this revenue line item. So that's 4% of it. Then we have county sales tax, which is 4% with other tuitions that we charge back and other services for the private school. So children that are attending the private schools in the areas that Brighton is providing services to, we build that back to their home districts. And all other revenue is 6%. So what I thought I'd do then is disaggregate the state aid portion of it. So this 21%, I disaggregated here. So about 50% of that is foundation aid. And that's where all the discussion is because that's where we're receiving about 50% of what is due to us in accordance with the formula. So $8 million in relation to our property taxes, it's about, almost a 16% representation of what we're short in the formula. So when people say, you know, why you keep talking about, that is a significant tax shift from state and local dollars to, or from state dollars to local dollars. And the rest are reimbursable aids. So this is all money that we spend and then in the next year we get it back. So there's transportation aid, there's building aid, all related to capital projects, and we have BOSI's expenditures, high-cost aids and things like that. So all of that money is built into the budget and we can relatively predict what that revenue source is gonna be going forward. So again, just to put it in the context here, this is the chart from the previous slide. So what we did is we looked at what our projections are going forward. And so trying to roll forward the new money that's gonna be available to support our operating program in the 2021 budget. So I looked at those major sources and we calculated. So tax levy from operations. So we expect new money to support incremental costs or new programs, new initiatives is about $900,000 or 1.4% increase in that spending. So that is available 100% for operations. Then we're also gonna receive new money through the tax levy specifically for the capital project. So we went out in 2017, we voted for a project, the voters voted for a project. That reimbursement aid starts 18 months after that project approval. So that money is earmarked for the debt associated with the project. So that's not money that we can account for from operations. When we look at foundation aid based on recent trends and absent a major shift in, in the funding, well, honoring the formula or a change or overhaul, I would expect that we would get similar money, new money that we receive next year, which is about $300,000 and represents, as a percentage, 3.65%. So that in itself sounds like, oh, that's a decent percentage of increase, but $300,000 in the context of an $80 million budget doesn't go all that far. So that's available for operations. And we look at building aid, again, specific to the capital project, $1.4 million. That's gonna be new money and, you know, the state's response to say, well, look at how much more money Brighton is getting. Well, that's based on the contract that we have from an expense-based aid formula. And then other expenses, so money that we're spending this year, the incremental costs of those expense-based aids, that is $200,000, 3.4%, and that would be available to support ongoing programs. So when you look at the operating, of course, I calculate a total of $1.4 million that would be available in new spending and that would support about a 1.8% increase in operations costs. So that's the context of our projections going forward. So I just wanted to recap where we were last year and I'll go quick with this. Specific to the capital, because if you remember that capital levy on the previous, on the previous slide, it was 1.4%. And there's the 2% tax levy, right? Well, we're actually not gonna get that full 2% going into next year because of this scenario. Thanks, Dan. So we've been in a fortunate position with our capital allocations of paying cash for projects that we've been getting more building aid than we have in debt service. That is weaning off in the next couple of years, so now we're gonna have an incremental cost of that one point, of that .6. So typically it's 2% is what you think about for operations under the tax cap. .6 of that is earmarked to offset that capital. So it's a shift from capital to operations. So we have to build that money in over the next couple of years and that diverts away from operations a little bit. Last slide?
Sorry. Can't get to stop either.
I need the next slide, thanks. So this is where we were, this is where we learned last year. And this was the executive budget proposal, the first budget that went out. We have our debt, we have our building aid, which is the orange, and then we have the net levy and where we are budgeting. So we've been planning for this capital project over the last couple of years, so we're actually budgeting more than what we needed in the levy. And our goal was to put a plan forth that stabilized the impact in the tax levy. We weren't unable to do that last year, so we had to take a little bit off of what we've been saving. And now we have an incremental cost in the project budget and then we'll achieve stabilization. So we got one more year of more money that's gonna be, needed to be raised before we can stabilize the impact. So that's something that we're contending with in this upcoming budget year. Tax cap wise, I presented this at the last meeting, so I'll just go over quickly. We were at 2.34% this year, last year, 18, 19, 20, excuse me. Next year with the capital exclusion, this big amount here, that was for the capital project, it would be at 4.32%. And then it stabilizes based on generally the 2% formula plus and, plus or minus the factors in the pilots. Last one. So the last part was, what's it look like and what do we talk about? So what's included in this presentation is the list of contingent budget items that were developed last year in the post-vote format, some of which we took this year. We deferred some of the costs, which as I previously explained, will be building back in and ramping back up over the next year or so. Some of the money that we've been setting aside for full-day K, we reduced that off to save program, but that's a commitment that we've made to implement that program. So we'll have to build that back in over this next couple of budget years. All the rest then were non-mandated. We identified all the non-mandated programs and services and, you know, for consideration of what we need to be reduced, if we need to save off the incremental costs and reduce to comply with, with the tax cap. I'm not sure if you want me to go in more detail with that, but certainly we can answer more questions.
So I'll jump in with the last five minutes of fame, so to speak, and I'll make sure to turn the alarm off so, since I was apparently incapable of silencing that. One, I want to make sure, two, the point is made, the reason why we are trying to do these in five minutes is we can present you ad nauseam, we can present you to boredom and oblivion and have so much data available to us that the challenge for us is to try and condense that to a point where we're giving you kind of the main points. Here's the point that we want you to walk away from and some of the feedback that you're asking for through the exchange. My job is to talk to you very quickly about advocacy and timeline. Lots of questions about what is happening in the district. We haven't heard anything. There have been a couple of news items out from the district about this and are on the website, links are available to us if people want to go back and take a look at them. We've had multiple meetings with our legislative representatives and talked through, who do we need to talk to? How do we make the point? Strategizing which legislators to go to, so not just our own, but legislators in other parts of the state whose districts might be similarly affected. And had a lot of strategy discussions around what to do next and who to be talking to. And that goes all the way back, starting really right after the budget vote in May, met in June, had meetings over the summer as well. We developed then the narrative and our advocacy package, so to speak, which is a set of documents that demonstrates very clearly the current state of the district in terms of state aid, what went wrong, where specifically in the formula we haven't been getting our fair share or our fair shake, and being able to demonstrate that to legislators. So basically what our pitch is and updated that for current numbers. Provided that testimony to the New York State Education Committee Roundtable on state aid in Buffalo, had the opportunity to sit in that meeting and provide that package. Sent that out, again, that's a news item that was sent out and is available on the website if people want to take a look at that. Also presented that to the Assembly Committee, so I should say the New York State Assembly Committee, not Senate Assembly, their education committee at their roundtable in Syracuse, just about a week and a half ago as well. We'll, I'll provide additional testimony on December 3 at Senate hearings in New York City, and then we'll be meeting with Governor's Office and key legislators over the next four months again to make that same case and explain that. We've also met with our Fight for Brighton partners in this, provided feedback and the narrative to Fight for Brighton so they could be operating from that same message point with that same dataset and will continue to do that as well. That advocacy is also something that extends to our Board of Education, attending legislative meetings, working on a legislative committee for Monroe County School Boards and being a part of that process and those meetings with legislators. You know, people have asked, well, what is the district doing? There were questions around, well, what is the board doing? We are a team that works on all of these things together, develops the materials together, develops strategy together, meets with groups of people together, whether it's Fight for Brighton or legislators. We're all working on that simultaneously and participating in that process and will continue to do that. There were also some people that asked, well, what can we do as community members? I would encourage you to work with Fight for Brighton, which has been such a powerful advocacy group on behalf of the district. Certainly that's one way to go. And at the end of the day, contacting your local legislators. That's the, that's your representative group in Albany and those are the people you should talk to. I think the Governor's Office plays a big, big role in this conversation with their initial, his initial proposal before the legislature weighs in, and that's a place to go to is contacting the Governor's Office. It should be pointed out, and you can get all those materials online in that package, but if you take a look, what's really interesting, and Lou's just an absolute genius in, in working through this and figuring this out, the formula itself is, I think, genius in the sense that it is meant to account for exactly what your demographics are in the district in, in real time. So the kids that you are committed to educating and the ability for your community to pay. And there are, I don't know, 15 or so factors within that formula, but it's every type of child in the district and it's the combined wealth ratio in the district and it's based on a series of indexes. And there's a lot of debate within the formula and both of those sessions that I attended, there was debate about, within the formula, are we measuring the right things? I'd actually make the suggestion that if they just followed the formula that they currently have, despite weaknesses, old indexes, old numbers, old percentages being used, random ways to apply the formula, if they just followed the formula, we'd be in a much better place than we are today. And the quick point that I'd make to you is, 10 years ago, if you look at the way aid was distributed across the state, it was distributed based on particular shares, regional shares, which is a political solution. So in other words, Long Island got a certain percentage of the total amount of money, New York City got a total amount, a percentage of the total amount, Western York, Central New York, et cetera. You get a share of the total pot of money. That has nothing to do with what the formula says you should get based on your current kids and your ability to pay. It's just a share politically. It's a political solution. And my suggestion to both groups was that that's not a criticism, that's a reality. They should own that actually and have some way to account for that in their own dividing of the money, but still be giving money to places that have demonstrated that they have a need for that. And the demonstration is not a made-up demonstration, it's based on your actual kids and your demographics in the district. So if they just started there and then they were equitable in how they had to reduce that, we'd be in a much better place. The shares in this last year's budget and 10 years ago, exactly the same. The same percentages going to the same regions. Because again, that's the political solution. No legislator, legislator wants to come home with less money than they did the year before, and that's the political reality. So we've made the point that if you look back when the first money was promised in 2007, the total amount of money that should have come to the district in that year, and they gave us that number, they said, this is what you should get if we could afford to pay the whole thing. We still, 10 years later, have not gotten that amount of money. And then our growth over time, the amount that our number should have grown over time, just that amount, we've gotten about half of our growth over time. So our number, for example, ballpark should have gone up $4 million, it's only gone up $2 million. So there's a pretty dramatic difference between what our numbers tell us we should be getting and what we are getting, and we're making that case. And the reality is they have to, to find a way to navigate their political reality with what is for us on the ground, the day-to-day working with kids and the funding that our taxpayers deserve in order to support that. So that's the legislative advocacy part of it. And then people have asked about a timeline. Timeline-wise, we'll react to the Governor's proposal in January. We, we will advocate, of course, as I just indicated on the previous slide, in all those ways, but then we react to what the Governor's proposal is. Whatever it says at that point is then where the advocacy switches gears and we are then approaching our legislators and the Governor's Office saying, okay, this is what you proposed, but this is how it impacts us. What people should know is within the formula being applied across the state, districts are grouped into tiers based on certain demographic characteristics, and that's how they manipulate the shares in the formula. So you might look like another district somewhere else in the state in two areas that they decided to use because they needed to help those two districts, so you get lumped into that tier, but that particular administrative formula doesn't really help you. So we need to work on being in the right tier and working with our legislators to get us then into the right place, which will drive aid more appropriately than it is right[1721.24] now. So we react to the Governor's proposal. And then right now, we're actively looking at the areas that were slated for reduction. So Lou had two slides on those. Those were areas that in the previous budget, we had explained after the last budget vote, the, the non, the budget vote that didn't pass, what we would have to look at long term. And so now we're continuing to look at those items, find ways to do those things differently, wanting to support children, and are there different ways to fund them? Are there different ways to support the program long term with a different cost amount and really having to dig into each of those? So that's kind of the creative process right now of trying to figure out, are there still ways to do these things that we think are so important for kids? And actively looking at that right now. And then what we'll do earlier than we've ever done it before is provide a list of those potential reductions to the community in the January, February timeframe, probably later, because we'll still be reacting to Governor's budget mid-January, and ask for feedback on those items. We're pretty clear in the fact that we had to borrow from places like our equipment spending or places where we had put money aside for staffing for full day kindergarten, out of those lines to hold off on reductions now. The easiest answer actually would have been just to go ahead and make those reductions immediately, and we didn't think that was the right thing for kids, for staff, for the community. So we went to the other places where we had funding and we could afford to do that, but those expenses, they exist going forward, they are a reality, they have to be paid for, whether that's equipment that needs to be replaced or the staffing for full day kindergarten, which will start in September of 2021. So when that funding is needed, the places that we said will have to be reduced, will have to be reduced unless funding changes, and that's, that is the reality. So there are a variety of those items, and we've detailed those, and we'll continue to go out and ask the, the community for feedback and for prioritizing of those as we move into the budget process. So those are the, the five minute of fame items. We want to jump now into the hot stove, and I'm going to ask, so people are going to answer some of these questions and make a one minute or less quick comment, or 30 second or less quick comment on these. Start times came up a lot, Lou, in the conversation and the exchange, and several different comments about that, as we saw the community in this exchange at least was split on feedback on those. When we looked at start times, what challenges did we encounter? What's your overall perspective on where we're heading?
So the challenges that we were facing were transportation and logistics, given that our schools have different lengths of, lengths of day. So our high school having a longer day than our elementary didn't allow for an easy flip with transportation, being transportation neutral, and that, and the private schools that we service as well. The second biggest challenge was the facility use and how to accommodate all the programs and services that we do after school, youth programs, district sponsored programs and the facilities that we have. So what we're working on this year is, we know we have to provide four buses for full day kindergarten. Our Director of Transportation is looking at different scenarios, whether it's increased walking distances, whether it's different drop off configurations, you know, starting after eight o'clock maybe, to try to, what we could do to limit the growth in transportation to that four buses. And then with facilities, we think we know what we need to do. The problem is that we're waiting for the state aid to reset from this, the 2017 capital project. It's a five-year aid reset to be able to invest in our facilities to get full reimbursement and minimize the cost on the local, local taxpayer.
Thank you. Carolyn Rabidu, our Director of Student Support Services, can you tell us a little bit about mental health work being done in the district right now?
I would love to. As you, if some of you remember, about four or five years ago, we did a mental health evaluation of all of our support systems in Brighton, and there were many recommendations that came out of that evaluation from the University of Buffalo. In the past couple of years, we have implemented many new initiatives because mental health has become our biggest umbrella. Everything comes under mental health and as, looking at our kids and supporting them. So we have Kristin Hahey, who is our K-12 navigator, who helps all families to look at services outside of the district, whether the family needs some support and to provide some counseling for kids in our district. We've implemented Second Steps, which is a program to help students in all the classrooms, kindergarten through fifth grade, have lessons on social, emotional health, friendships, flexible thinking, problem solving. So all of our kids are receiving those mental health supports from our mental health staff K-5. We have, I see it's up there, but we'll talk a little bit about restorative practice and culture building circles that will help support all of our kids K-12 with mental health and making connections with adults and each other, which will hopefully influence everything that happens for them at school. And the Wellness Committee, the overarching theme is building bridges of trust. So how do we support families and students in promoting more personal interactions and having more meetings where people can talk to each other and we can have those personal connections? We are looking at doing Screenagers 2. For those of you who remember Screenagers 1 a couple of years ago, is one of our best events we've ever had in Brighton, and we had hundreds of people turn out for that. Where the Wellness Committee is looking at that and what that might look like for the community and partnering with the technology pieces, and what does screen time do for our kids and their social, emotional health? And we will be offering a mental health first aid for parents, students, or excuse me, parents and faculty, how to talk to your kids about mental health issues, like how to put the Band-Aid on before you can get to the hospital. So we have a lot of things happening that come under the umbrella of mental health, and I will tell you, that is the first question and is a guiding principle for everything that we're working on.
Thanks very much. Dr. David Baker, can you tell us about implicit bias training and culturally responsive curriculum efforts in the district?
Sure. Specific to implicit bias training, we brought that, the initial parts of that training to our staff two, three years ago now. At this point, we are embedding implicit bias training in all of our new teacher work that we're doing, rolling into culturally responsive curriculum. And specific to that, we have taken our current framework that we use to design all of our curriculum and a year ago, embedded the requirements, if you will, but the, and provided the associated professional development for staff. So when they are writing curriculum, they are doing so through a culturally responsive lens.
Great, thank you. I'll address the win at TCMS, because Mr. Thomas is probably squirreling his seat, thinking, what is that up there for? Couple of different comments in the exchange about the win period. It stands for what I need. This was the extra 30 minutes, that's at the end of the day at the middle school, similar to the flex period at the high school, except the timing of that. It's been enormously successful at the high school where it is in the day, and it's been more of a challenge at the middle school. Perhaps that's developmental, perhaps that's structure, perhaps it's timing. I'm really happy to tell you, though, that's being looked at, as a matter of fact, immediately. And we're not looking to wait all the way until next year to try something different. We're expecting to make announcements to middle school, staff, students and parents pretty soon about the idea of moving that win period at different times during the day through the course of this year, to actually pilot that, perhaps by quarter, to try it in different places, instead of being locked into something that's not working as, as well as we would like it to. For some kids, it does work well, for some staff it does, for others it doesn't. We're going to try some different things, move that to different times of day and see if we get a different result. And hats off to the staff at TCMS for thinking outside the box and kind of changing the structure on that, and the administrators for trying to find a way to make that happen right now, really excited about that. Another question or comment that came up was around instructional time and days, and somebody just mentioned, we have the shortest day and the least number of days. It's actually not entirely accurate. We don't have the shortest day. We actually added 30 minutes in collaboration with Brighton Teachers Association several years ago, and that's what resulted in win time and flex time at the 612 level and more instructional time, 30 additional minutes, as a matter of fact, at the K-5 level. And that came up over and over again with our colleagues around the county, really being envious of the fact that we're able to add to that time. We're likely middle of the pack or so, but we're definitely not the shortest day. And in terms of the number of days of the year, we're not likely the shortest, but we are probably close. And part of that is because we take a different set of holidays off than everybody else, too. But I'd say, you know, I wouldn't tell my colleagues this, but we maximize the time that we're here. So we do our best to come up with the best schedule for kids and parents. And on the days that are shorter for us in the district that might be different from other people, the early release days, those are really powerful, impactful days of staff development, where our staff as continuous learners are engaged constantly in their own professional development or in an opportunity to meet with parents one-on-one and have parent conferences that we think actually is a pretty valuable part of instructional time. Might not be with the child right in front of us, but it's certainly with some group or in our own professional learning that's awfully, awfully important. Somebody made a comment about teachers not being fully qualified. I can say, because I am involved in the final interviews for all of our staff members, all of our teaching staff members, along with Dr. Baker and Mrs. Rabidu, that actually they are all fully qualified. Our teachers absolutely are. As a matter of fact, they're not just fully qualified, they're highly qualified. We are really proud of the people that we're bringing on board. So it just might be a misperception that somebody has, and if anybody wants to follow up on that, we're happy to talk about the qualifications of our teachers. In fact, Lou gets anxious about the amount of experience we are hiring with, because we go out and recruit, we look for, and then compensate for that experience. We're very proud of that, as a matter of fact, getting people to come here from other districts, from other places, who've done really great, great work. So I would say they're not only fully qualified, they are highly qualified and a great, great group of people. Restorative practices, Carolyn already mentioned. I do want to touch on the accelerated coursework, extended studies, and then I may ask Lou to finish up this portion with the air quality comment on what we're doing around that. Around accelerated coursework and extended studies, a couple of different comments, and they were, they were interesting, because they were kind of a different take on things that normally come up. We have expanded our offerings, our AP offerings, pretty significantly throughout the district and our extended studies in a couple of different ways. We've looked at equity and access to those courses, feeling as though every student should have the opportunity to be involved in rigorous accelerated coursework. So we've already seen a change in the number of kids, particularly at the secondary level, who are accessing accelerated coursework by subgroup, the largest growth in the African-American community among our students, who are taking more AP courses and graduating with AP credit more than ever before. We're up over 70% total of our students leaving here with at least one AP course under their belt. And the importance of that is, we know that studies will tell us kids are likely to be much more successful at the college level and in completion of college if they've had access to college coursework prior to going to college. So we want to make sure that that's open to everybody. We've changed the entire way that students are recommended for those courses. It's really wide open for students to tackle that coursework. We've also, though, most importantly, changed the way we support that work and making sure that we're providing kids with the necessary supports to all be able to access the coursework. So across the spectrum, really having an opportunity for all students. And been very focused at the elementary level in making sure that we're looking for equity within our enrollment and looking to see the giftedness in every child. And so trying to really be aware of our own implicit biases, our own strategies and our systems for identifying accelerated students and make sure that it really, truly is accessible to all students. We are not looking actually to reduce extended studies, although that's had to be part of the conversation in the budget process. We would actually say philosophically, we'd love to be expanding extended study services and supporting everybody. And no different, we are, in those other areas that were mentioned, the one comment about OTPT or English Language Learners, those are services that are provided as a mandate for children who need those specific services. So there wouldn't be a discussion around limiting something that is absolutely needed by students either. So a little bit of a different take on that. We're glad people are interested in that topic, and again, happy to talk more about that if people like to discuss that further. Last but not least, Lou, can you tell us about air quality during construction?
So we have, we've engaged a construction manager to manage that. In addition, we have a third-party inspector, TERRICON, that monitors and oversees project activities, specific to any asbestos abatement. None of that happens during the school, school day. That is strictly monitored by code, it's overseen by the Department of Labor, OSHA, PASH, which is the public, public employee side of it. So it's strictly monitored and all the rules and code is strictly adhered to.
Great. And I skipped one important item that you've been absolutely integral to. Lou, can you tell us a little bit about the diversity and hiring efforts in the district as well?
Sure. So last year, we developed and we presented to the Board of Education playbook, if you will, that's the analogy we've been using, and we're approaching it from an aggressive recruitment plan, so both short-term and long-term recruitment strategies. We've looked at environmental attributes in desired state, and this year, we're working on a retention program, assuming we're going to be successful in diversifying our staff. We want to make sure that when they're on board, we have best practices, human resource practices and environmental attributes to ensure success long-term.
Great, thank you very much. So before I flip to the, the exchange for tonight, and we facilitate another conversation and open up the floor if anybody else wants to add, if you could take a look, have you, have you gone to the QR code or clicked on the link? Do you need me to keep it up on the screen for one more second at all, or are you all set? Okay. No, no problem, I'll keep it up there. Sorry, now that I announced your name to everybody on Facebook. By the way, there's 417 people have engaged in Facebook Live at this point, so thanks to the 417 of you, I'm counting. And we'll give you a minute, too, to load your questions, your comments, your suggestions in the exchange before I start to pull them up on the screen and keep starring other people's thoughts. It'd be great if everybody is able to star at least 10 of the thoughts that have been And if you're watching on Facebook Live and you're able to go into the exchange or add If you just point at that QR code and then you tap on the link at the top of your screen. You can also go to Safari. That's the link right there, too, and the code. I think if you're on an angle, then maybe that's tricky. All right, everybody in? If you're not, I have the link right here, too. I can pass this to you if you want to type that into Safari. Okay, so these are the comments that are coming in live right now. Very thorough conversation. Appreciate the gathering feedback, the gathering conversation tonight. Thanks to Mark's wife for putting that comment in. So now the idea is, we'll just have a facilitated conversation here, kind of summarizing these and asking some people to comment on each of them. First, the positive comment at the beginning, thank you for offering this forum, and the second, very thorough conversation. Really appreciate that feedback. Again, trying to do things differently. We did this once during the budget process last year before the second budget vote, not with this volume of people in the room, it was just a different staff at it, and really excited to try and look at different ways to engage people in these conversations. So thanks for the feedback. We'll certainly continue to try this and other innovative ways to engage with you. It's all about the bottom line. Please update the, the 2021 budget, which is what we're able to do tonight as well. The recording of this will be available on the website, so if you want to go back through Lou's presentation, it was very thorough, very good, and you certainly could take a look at that. Question here about lunchtime, really interesting. Too little, especially if they need to stand in line first to buy lunch, unhealthy for students to be rushed to eat. So this was part of the conversation with the middle school, too, around their schedule. We don't have an assigned lunch period at the high school, and there's, of course, this conversation at the K-5 level. This is good feedback. I don't really have an answer, other than to say to you that's, I don't think that that's wrong. I think that's something we ought to keep thinking about in terms of having, kids having enough time to have a healthy time there. Thought exchange is problematic. We want another feedback mechanism for many reasons, including the ways in which it's moderated. We're actually moderating only right now, comments, if they are rude, hurtful, name a particular individual, et cetera, but for the most part, the comments that are in or put in are all showing up. So unless they were flagged for those reasons, which wouldn't be comments we'd ever in our environment necessarily support, that's not the positive, productive kind of conversation we're trying to sponsor. We try and actually be as vulnerable as we possibly can. I can tell you, as somebody standing here, and I know the conversations with my colleagues, it's very vulnerable to not have necessarily a lot of prepared material and to be kind of on the fly answering these kind of questions. So we're trying to always be very open with that. And I would say to you, you always have the feedback mechanism of coming to talk to us. Come to board meetings, offer comments, send us email, we respond to everything. Come and meet with any individual administrator, give us that feedback. Every way possible, we're willing to engage with you, certainly, and always thinking about different ways to do that. This has certainly been a tool that has given us a tremendous amount of feedback from so many community members that have been able to enter it. It's been a very, very valuable tool that we'll continue to use, but it won't be the only tool. Face-to-face is often, for us, the most valuable kind of conversation. This is just a way to engage with as many people in as deep and as inclusive a way as we possibly can. The anonymity of it is, I think, very helpful for people to, as we talk about, make space for the quiet ones. Allow people who maybe don't feel comfortable coming to a board meeting, putting their hand up in the air, or having their name on an email or phone call, to still provide their feedback. It really does give everybody an opportunity to be a part of the circle. Restorative practices do not seem to be open in consistent, helpful ways. Kids are confused. So we're at the beginning of this, and actually, we did an observation, the board, board members, myself, and went and joined a restorative circle at French Row that was just enormously helpful, and some of us have been a part of them in all different ways throughout the district, whether they were in discipline situations, community building situations, peace circles, et cetera. et cetera. Really, really valuable work. But the implementation of anything requires a lot of training and a lot of buildup of capital in that area, human capital. And so that is something we're working on and making sure that we're consistent in that. If you take a look at last, the last board meeting before tonight, two weeks ago, and it's posted online, Betsy Balling did a great job of presenting the plan for that and what the training will be and how we're rolling that out. So we've had a huge number of staff members trained already, but we're continuing to build in that way and actually using a lot of restorative practices with the staff as well. So we hope that kids see that as a pretty evenly provided opportunity and that that continues to build. Timeline for implementing later school start times? There isn't one, and we continue to look at ways that that could happen long-term, but certainly with the budget change last year, that may be further off. That's a significant investment for us, and Lou detailed some of the changes or the challenges tonight for that. So there isn't a timeline. We'll continue to look at that. But as you can also see from the comments, people are pretty split in that area. So we'd want to make sure that the community is in favor of that before we move forward. Certainly, a lot of comments on that and a lot of split in terms of how people feel about that. And again, the investment is a pretty significant one, so there isn't a specific timeline. So a couple of different comments, some of which I've already talked about. Doesn't seem to be a plan or any district-wide communication about a plan for diversity, equity, and inclusion. We need to think about then how we're communicating, because again, last board meeting, each of those areas were reported out on, and there was a follow-up email the next, at the end of that week, the district-wide E news that went out that detailed, as a matter of fact, the blueprint work that's being done on each of those three subcommittees, the hiring, the family engagement, and the special education subcommittee. And certainly, we heard more about that tonight as well. More transparency in terms of how students are selected for extended studies and AP classes. It's definitely not up to any one person. There's a system for that, a process, and parents can actually refer their children and ask for them to participate in that program, and there's a process for reviewing that as well. We're pretty wide open with parents about that. So if that's something this person would like to talk more about, we'd love to sit down with them and dig into that as well. School start times, we've talked quite a bit about. There's a person here who's looking for their child to have an opportunity for gymnastics. That's not currently a team that we're looking to start, and currently, in the current budget situation, we wouldn't be investing in a new team at this point, to be very candid with the person asking that question. Certainly, always looking for different opportunities for kids, but we'd have to be reducing opportunities that are currently in place, but certainly something we could explore further. And a last comment that somebody has mentioned here about more political pressure to get our share of funding from all those involved. So that's the comments that are in the exchange right now. Like to offer people here in the room the opportunity, we just asked that you speak into the microphone. We can pass that to you, just so that it's picked up on the auto on Facebook Live. Anybody here want to make a comment or have any suggestions, anything they'd like to offer tonight as well? While the microphone is going around, I'd like to thank our board members who are in the audience tonight, administrators in the audience tonight. This is a great way for us to gather feedback as well.
Kevin, you mentioned you had a lot of meetings over the last few months. Can you give us some feedback on what happened at these meetings? What's going on? What kind of feedback? Are we just talking to the same people over and over again? I know you're probably expanding that out to new people, but do we have next steps based on all these meetings that you had?
Yeah. I mean, the next steps right now are to prepare our package and to start to provide that. So we're at that stage of, okay, we put that narrative package together with the most real-time, up-to-date data of how we're currently impacted by state aid, so not just the argument from before, but the most recent, and that's the stage we're at at this point.
I'm thinking of next steps for the community. In other words, how can we get more people involved?
Write and call. Write letters to legislators.
But in an organized fashion? Is there any way in an organized fashion?
So I would direct you to Fight for Brighton, Nelson, and the reason why I would do that is because although we can be advocates as, as administrators in the district or board members, we can't necessarily lead an advocacy campaign ourselves, right?
I understand that.
But, that being said, our colleagues in Fight for Brighton have been an incredibly powerful and resourceful community group. I would send you to their Facebook page, the Fight for Brighton Facebook page.
I'm familiar with the page. I will go to the page. I know they've done a good job, but I think we got to expand it beyond that. Maybe involve other community organizations. In other words, we got to apply strong political pressure for change to take place.
Right.
You can't do it. It has to come from the residents, and unless we get together, it's not going to happen. So I'm looking, I'm looking for ways to make that happen.
Nelson Lepatton is available on Facebook. He will take any of your volunteer efforts. But, no, Nelson, I appreciate that.
I am, I am. And you know, the Brighton Chamber of Commerce is willing to help do that.
I appreciate that.
And there may be other organizations that would do the same. I really think we got to, we got to fight harder. We got to fight harder.
I don't disagree with you that as much community pressure as can be placed would be very, very important. And certainly, I will tell you, the legislators that, that we work with are listening, and they're open, and they will meet, and they will talk about it. The difficulty is, every community across the state of New York is coming and saying, not the same thing, everybody has different arguments. And it's the ability to illuminate that and then for people to say, okay, matter of fact, for legislators who do not live here and do not represent us in this area, to buy into that and be willing to either give up aid on their end of things or to take a political risk to provide that for us. And so that's the trick and the challenge.
Hi, Judy Wegman. I'm a teacher here in Brighton. I'm also the president of Brighton Teachers Association, and I'm also a taxpayer in Brighton. So I wanted to connect with what was just mentioned. I'm in full support of that, and I do want the community to know that the Brighton Teachers Association works in, in great partnership with, with the Board of Education, with our administrators, all around the increase of foundation aid. And I have now reached out this year in probably a greater way than ever before to New York State United Teachers. So that's our union for the entire state, all by way of advocating in a very targeted way for Brighton and, and the fact that it is truly a crime with the, the lack of foundation aid that we're receiving. So, so there's a very large organization that's going to be moving with us, and as soon as I receive any type of action plan, I'll be rolling it out with, sharing it with, of course, our Fight for Brighton group, but anyone else who wants to know about it, because I have a total agreement with you, every single one of us who pays taxes in this town should be contacting our political representatives to, well, start doing their job for us. Thank you.
Nelson, I'll give you an interesting, Judy, an interesting statistic. Within the tier of schools that we were placed in in last year's budget, if you look at the pure per pupil increase to our aid, one district in that group is Austining. We lumped into that category for whatever demographics we put in there within the formula, they received $439 more per student, and ours was about $39 more per student. So that gives you the disparity of how these things end up in the, in the process. While the microphone makes its way around, I'll make another comment. There is a person asking after sharing that you have met with the legislative committees on New York State Ed. What is your gut feeling on another tax cap issue this spring? Will Albany provide funding as needed? So I hate to commit us to just, you know, one particular number, one particular theory. However, I am very willing to say to you that it is highly, highly, highly unlikely that we are going to come back to the community and ask to exceed the property tax cap. I don't mind saying that. I think our board members would agree. The message was pretty loud and clear from people in the community that that's not something that is acceptable. So I hate to ever say 100% because some circumstance could change where the community says, no, you absolutely have to do this. Two factors at play, though, this year. One is our cap number is much higher. So the cap number being much higher would mean your tax increase to go over the cap would be even higher than that, and that's not something that we're ever interested in proposing to the community. Number two, again, it was very clear within the vote last year and with people in the community that that's not something people are interested in, and we try and be very respectful of the messages that are sent to us and what the community wants us to do. My gut is that we are going to face a significant challenge, though, again, this year. And my gut is that because the state of New York is not swimming in additional funding, that we're still in the same situation. If I'm being very candid with the community, we will, we have not given up. We will absolutely work and work and work and work and work and beg and plead. I would stop short of ever saying steel. We will do everything we can, right, to make that happen. But the reality is, we are planning for there not being a big change in that. This is, we're not being unrealistic in that conversation. Do not mistake that, though, for any, in any way, shape, or form, acquiescing to that situation either. But in our planning, we're trying to also be realistic in that. Maran?
I would just add that I'm thrilled to hear that the Chamber of Commerce and other people want to help support the efforts. It's going to continue, and I think what the community needs to just be ready for is that idea, and kind of what Kevin's saying, including the fact that the tax cap, where we are, what will happen. We don't know what the governor's proposal will be. We can anticipate what that is. Lou does a beautiful job of anticipating that. But I do think what I would ask for the community to think about is just preparing themselves to, to be advocates, to be able to speak whenever they are present with a legislator or with any person that's, you know, within the education funding realm, to make sure that you're mentioning it, but also to be ready for the fact that there probably will be some advocacy requested of you in the near future, and hopefully, you'll recognize that this is going to become a routine practice as opposed to a one-off opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Two other comments. Well, if anybody else has anything in the room they'd like to say. One, I noticed here, poor behavior from students shouldn't be tolerated by the school. Huge distraction, disrespect to other students and teachers. Absolutely. Couldn't agree more that we, I think you're absolutely right, and we try and focus on any behavior that happens in our schools all the time. I think our teachers, our assistant principals, our principals, everybody involved in that conversation actually is, is very much on top of that, and we're in agreement. So we say thank you very much for that feedback. That's something that we're focused on. And really focused, again, on that conversation from both a mental health perspective but also a restorative perspective, using restorative practices actually to rebuild relationships, repair relationships, and build community within these conversations. So we are not also looking at behavior as transactional. You know, you do this, this happens, and then we walk away from it. We're, we're saying, how do we change that behavior in a positive way? There's a comment here about the, a problem with the artificial intelligence, the AI algorithm that categorizes comments by topic. Changing school start times, I've actually got 13 comments, not seven, the greatest number of any topic. It should be on the agenda. The reality is, when we first set these, for one, we're looking at some of the highest rated comments, but among the 13 versus the seven, I'm guessing this person is talking about the seven within the common ratings, the common ratings high, common ratings low, and similar. That means that those seven comments were the ones that those two groups had very disparate rankings on. I don't know about the other six. I'd have to look at those six. And you can regroup within those, that artificial intelligence function as well, so we could take a further look at that. It could also be that some of the changing school start times fell into a different category, for example, under budget, because people know also there's an expense to that. So I'd have to take a further look at that. What the bottom line is, you all need to know, is we look at every single comment. We dig into every single comment, and we analyze every comment, and that's all part of the discussion.